dot org. Madam City Clerk, will you please take role?
Thank you Chair Kent. At this time I will conduct an oral roll call if each Commissioner would respond with a present when their name is called. Commissioner Cos.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Present.
Vice Chair Davis.
Present.
Chair Kent.
Here.
All Commissioners are present.
Great, thank you. Take us to special items. I don't see any here. Oh, I'm sorry. I went past Pledge of Allegiance. Let us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. And one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Special items are none. And now we'll go to public comment. This is the time for the public to speak uninterrupted. Please address your comments to the presiding officer. Public comment is limited to a total of thirty minutes. If you'd like to request to speak, select raise your hand icon on the Zoom before the public comment period begins, before public conference. You will then be called when your turn is up to speak. Do we have any public comment period comment cards at this time?
I have received no public comment request from either email or from any of the Zoom participants.
Okay, then with that said, seeing none, we will close public comment at this time. Do we have anybody want to reorder the agenda? I think we only have one item, so. That's going to be tough to do. So. Let's take it on to item one, which is consideration of a resolution to approve the conditional use permit and make findings of public convenience or necessity to allow a wine and beer tasting room on certain property located one thirty-one North Glendora Avenue. APN eighty-six thirty-eight zero one six dash zero three eight. Juanito Pavon is the project is the applicant, project number PLN twenty dash zero zero three three. And at this time, I'm going to ask Assistant City Planner Joseph Weaver to present a report to the staff, to the public.
Thank you Chair and good evening Commissioners and Happy New Year to everyone. This item is a request for the approval of a conditional use permit and to make a finding of public convenience or necessity to allow a wine and beer tasting room located on North Glendora Avenue. The project number is PLN twenty dash zero zero three three. Next please. The applicant Juanito Pavon, on behalf of the business Coco Vino LA is requesting the approval of a conditional use permit to allow a wine slash beer tasting room, which is a permitted use in the zone with the approval of a CUP pursuant to the Glendora Municipal Code. A wine slash beer tasting room is defined in the municipal code as a quote business offering onsite and offsite sale of wine and beer sales, which might include food service, including a full restaurant service or hors d'oeuvres and prepackaged gourmet foods and other retail sales of associated merchandise, including gift baskets. Entertainment restricted to unamplified live music may be included as part of the use. So that's the definition of a wine slash beer tasting room in the code. Upon review of the application, the proposed use and business is consistent with this definition. The proposed business offers both on and offsite wine and beer sales. The use would primarily be a retail business offering wine and beer sales for offsite consumption, but will also offer a small seating area and bar area for onsite tasting instruction and general consumption. Additionally, various prepackaged food items will be available for purchase and consumption. A business summary submitted by the applicant and the business is included as attachment D to the staff report and as well as a food menu is included as attachment E to this this report. Lastly, the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, also known as ABC, is requiring that a finding of public convenience or necessity be made by the planning commission due to an over-concentration of licenses within the specific census tract this this business is going into. Next please. Here's a vicinity map of the of the property, one thirty-one North Glendora Avenue. It's within the city's downtown village area and located on the west side of North Glendora Avenue between East Foothill and north or east Meta Avenue to the north. The tenant space, as highlighted on the on the photo there, is approximately one thousand four hundred sixty-six square feet in size. The project site has an existing general plan land use designation of village mixed use and a zoning designation of civic center area plan T five village core. Next please. This proposed floor plan depicts the interior layout of the proposed business. The cashier and display areas occupy the majority of the floor plan with the bar and restaurant. I'm sorry, with the the bar seating areas and restrooms being being located towards the rear of the tenant tenant space. As stated earlier, the the proposed use will consist of both on and offsite sale of beer and wine. Onsite sales and consumption will take place at a six to eight seat bar, which is shown towards the the very rear of the of the store. This is where tasting instructional classes and onsite consumption of wine and beer will take place. It could see up to six to eight people. Wine tastings will be served by wine machines, which will allow customers to sample wine, one, two, or five ounces at a time. Instructional classes will also take place within this seating area, which would be led by both winemakers and certified members of of the business staff. The intent of the classes is for instructional purposes, where customers can taste wine and learn more about the wine and tasting process and, you know, ask questions to the the wine tasting professionals. As shown, the small bar area is confined to the very rear of the business and occupies a small portion of the overall floor plan of the of the proposed business. Regarding onsite consumption, which this business is proposing, staff would like to note that with the with the most recent wine slash beer tasting room approval, which was approved by the planning commission back in two thousand thirteen, under project number PLN thirteen dash zero 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 seven, a condition was included for that project, which limited onsite consumption to tastings only and limited the amount of ounces that that could be served for tasting purposes. This condition was included within the approved resolution of the most recent wine slash beer tasting room. And this was approximately eight years ago. Regarding this subject, CUP application, with the request of the applicant, staff has not included this condition within the draft resolution for this CUP request. The proposed business is requesting both tastings along with wine classes and general consumption of of wine and beer, offering the ability for customers to enjoy the occasional glass of wine and beer, which would likely exceed any imposed ounce limitations. The applicant has stated that their intent of this business is not to be like a tavern or bar or saloon, but they would they would need the flexibility to allow customers to enjoy the full the full glass of wine or beer if they so choose to. And this is an important part of their their overall business concept. Staff would like to reiterate that the proposed use with with onsite consumption is consistent with the definition of a wine slash beer tasting room, which is allowed in this zone through the approval of a CUP. And by by its definition, there are no mention about limitations on serving amounts for for onsite consumption. Additionally, offsite sales are included in the business proposal, and this is inherently a retail wine wine shop, since retail offsite retail comprises the majority of the business. As shown, you can see the various shelves and wine racks, along with the coolers that are proposed on the on the proposed floor plan. These will display beer and wine for off sale purchase. Other items will also be displayed and sold for purchase, including prepackaged food items such as meats, cheeses, crackers, sandwich, chocolates, various related snacks like that to come that that are going to be a part of this business. In addition to the food items, our artwork displays will also likely be sold. The cashier counter will be located towards the front of the store near the near the main entrance as shown on the plan to the right. The proposed hours of operation for this business are as follows: ten AM to eleven PM Monday through Friday, ten AM to midnight Friday through Saturday, eleven AM to eleven PM on Sundays, and ten AM to one AM on New Year's Eve. Consistent with other businesses in the village, alcohol cannot be served for onsite consumption within an hour of the business closing, so that there's going to be like a intervening period there. Lastly, the subject property is within the parking exemption exemption district. Therefore, no no onsite parking requirement is 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 relevant for this application. Next please. And displayed here are simply photos that that were submitted with the application. They were just taken off the internet and these are purely for reference purposes to give an idea to the commission and members of the public on how the proposed business will look and feel on the inside. Next please. And going into the, these are just going to be some site photos of the of the tenant space. So this is the formerly known as the Glendora Floor Store. You can see here, it's kind of been cleared out. These are photos of the interior space. Next please. And shown here are the is the front facade of the the soon-to-be business, showing the the front elevation of the store. No change really, really being proposed here. Next please. Displayed here are some of the more pertinent conditions of approval, which are listed in the draft resolution, which is attachment A to the this report. Various standards, standard conditions of of approval relating to the onsite sale of wine and beer have been included, along with recommended conditions from the city's police department. Other included conditions will help regulate this proposed business, along with all future uses, so that any future business which proposes alcohol will be required to conform to the code's definition of a wine slash beer tasting room, as mentioned before. Additionally, any significant changes to the proposed the proposed and approved for plan, hours of operation or any other condition would require a modification of this CUP, which would require the review of the planning commission. Next please. The applicant has applied for a type forty-two alcohol license from ABC. A type forty-two license authorized the sale of wine and beer for consumption on or on premise where sold. Although the type forty-two license is commonly used by bars or taverns, the licensing representative from ABC has stated this is the appropriate license for this use, considering the nature of the proposed business. The type forty-two license allows for both on and offsite privileges and is required to sell beer beer and wine for on-premise consumption at an establishment that's not considered a restaurant, such as this. Additionally, according to ABC, there is what's called an undue concentration of alcohol licenses within the subject census tract. Other businesses in the census tract which contain alcohol licenses that contribute to this undue concentration are listed within the staff report. Where an undue concentration exists such as this, additional licenses cannot be issued unless a finding is made that public convenience or necessity would be served by the additional issuance of of the license, which would be this this proposed business. For the type forty-two license accompanying the proposed business, the planning commission is charged with making that finding. The proposed beer and wine tasting room would be the only tasting room in the area with a type forty-two license and will be the only business of its kind within the the subject census tract and even arguably the city. Staff believes that the public convenience or necessity would be served by issuing the requested license due to the unique nature of the business compared to other existing businesses in the area and the benefit that this business would bring to to the community. No other businesses in the area offer currently offer the ability to taste beer and wine and purchase it from the same location. Therefore, the the statement regarding the finding of public convenience or necessity is contained within section four of the draft resolution. Next please. So this proposal is in compliance with and furthers the intent of the city's general plan goals and policies, which can be seen here. The business would be a suitable addition to the village and would provide for a unique experience for both residents and adjacent communities. Next. Notices were mailed out to all property owners within a five hundred foot radius on December sixteenth, twenty twenty. The notice was also published in the San Gabriel Valley Examiner on December twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. And to date, staff has received no no inquiries regarding this project proposal. Next please. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a notice of exemption for this project pursuant to section fifteen three zero one of sequel guidelines and grant a conditional use permit and making a finding of public convenience or necessity to allow a wine slash beer tasting room at one thirty-one North Glendora Avenue, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my staff report. I am available to answer any questions the commission members of the public may have and the applicant Juanito is also available for questions as well. Thank you.
Does the applicant have anything to? Does the applicant get a chance here or?
Yes, the applicant does. I would open the public hearing. Here from the applicant. And then if there are any public comments.
I'd like to ask some questions prior to the applicant, just so he can address them if by chance.
That's fine.
Okay. I'm looking for, making sure I get the high sign, the wave.
I believe the chair is muted.
Is he? Oh, okay. Glad to be on.
Well, that's why you didn't hear what I had to say.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Because everything you just said to do, I did. All right, go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So as far as the poor limitations, so we're abandoning our typical one, two, five ounce type stuff in the process is what we're doing?
Um, yeah, so as mentioned with the last use similar to this one, which would be a wine and beer tasting room, there was an ounce limitation with as 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 part of that that use. That has been requested to be eliminated with this proposal, based on the 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 specific proposal of this particular business. Again, it's it's kind of although it's consistent with a wine and beer tasting room as as defined in the code, it kind of is more of a retail, a retail sales shop with with the ability for onsite consumption also.
So that's more related to Glendora's limitations, not to the type forty-two license?
Um, correct, and I I think I think ABC would also impose ounce limitations under a under a separate license designation, if I'm not mistaken, not under the forty-two. There's no limitations.
Got it. Are we allowing consumption outside on the sidewalk?
That is, that hasn't been proposed as as part of this use.
Would that be within our purview to include if we so choose to this evening?
You know, I want to check that because let me, while you're asking other questions, because I think that outdoor service of alcohol may be limited to restaurants in the code, but while you're asking questions, let me look that up.
Okay. Undue concentration, that's an interesting thing. So do you by chance have any idea how the ABC or the alcohol board determines that in each individual setting?
Yeah, given the likes of Claremont, LeBarn, DuSah, Magrovia.
Yeah, yeah. So I've been in contact with ABC a few times throughout this process and it's quite confusing how how they how they do this. Staff's staff's interpretation of this before was that the 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 undue concentration and the finding for public convenience or necessity was only required for off-sale businesses. But come to find that this business, since this business is featuring both on and offsite sales and with the specific type that they're obtaining, which is a type forty-two, that in itself somehow triggers the 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 find the undue concentration, the finding for for public convenience or necessity. They they did give us a list of all other businesses within the census tract that 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 this undue concentration is also applicable to, and it's mainly other other restaurants in the village that have a type. I I think it's a type forty-one license for restaurants as well as some other restaurants in in the village. This this proposed business, though, is is unique in the sense that it's it's a type forty-two, which we don't have too many of in the city. And I think based on based on that and based on the business proposal is is why they're requesting is why the undue concentration got got triggered. That that's kind of from from my conversations with ABC, that's kind of what I've been able to to must must up.
I probably should add, it's not it's not an uncalled for thing. I worked in I worked in a I worked in Claremont before here and I edited several of them. It's the threshold for 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 that limitation is is the ABC's threshold. It's not our threshold. That whenever you get to that number, they want want to say, city, are you okay with this number? So that's sort of why they why they request that.
That's what's curious is they they set the bar and then they say, well, but if you want to crawl over it, go ahead, right?
But they want us to say we are.
Yeah.
Right.
So real quickly, and this will maybe go back to the applicant if they're available, but Coco Vino LA indicates they're established in two thousand and four. Do they have other sites that they have already opened like this as a model?
Not at this time.
So this is this is their first spot.
Yeah.
As far as we know. Okay, all right. And then if the director had a chance, is is the exterior consumption an option for us to consider?
Yeah, for for beer and wine tasting businesses, outdoor service of alcohol is not an option. It's it's exclusively allowed for restaurants only.
So can can you define a restaurant?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the code defines a restaurant and typically we've looked at a restaurant and, you know, if if you would could qualify as a bona fide eating establishment for an ABC license, then you're a restaurant. The license that this business is getting is not one that's associated with a bona fide eating establishment.
So what about, I mean, I don't know what their timeline is for opening, but you know, at some point, our COVID restrictions is going to allow outdoor dining again, but possibly not indoor dining. So how would that affect this establishment if they're not able to serve alcohol outside?
So we're primarily a retail shop.
Okay.
Eighty eighty-five percent of our business is retail.
Okay.
So, you know, of course, we would welcome and love people to come in and and join us inside, but, you know, doing offsite consumption is the large part of what we do. So online sales, delivery, and just the retail setup.
Okay.
Let's bring it back to commission, because we haven't really opened public comment yet for the applicant to answer the questions. Is there any other commissioners have any questions?
I think I I think I'm good enough to go. Thanks.
At this time, I'm going to open public comment. I'm going to invite the applicant to address the commission. You have a total of ten minutes to speak. Then we will open public comment. We'll we'll continue public comment for others to speak and the applicant will have five minutes to rebut. Will the applicant like to address the commission at this time?
I would.
Just to be clear, it's a public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry.
So good evening to everyone. My name is Juanito Pavon. This is my partner Curtis Wells. We've been in the wine and restaurant business for collectively for about forty to forty-five years. I personally GM'd about ten restaurants throughout LA County. Worked throughout LA County, all the way up to Malibu, Beverly Hills, Bel Air, LA proper downtown. Some of my pedigree consists of, I worked for Chef Joakim Splishal, as well as Curtis at Patina. Worked at Spago for Hotel Bel Air as well. So we've got hotel and restaurant experience. We've both been beverage directors, wine directors. We're both Sommeliers. We're educators and we feel like Coco Vino in Glendora will serve a very, very unique purpose by having the ability to invite guests to come in and try a wine before they buy it and also just to relax, have a glass of wine. And then international wine selection, as well as chocolate selection, that will be put together by one of our chocolate DAs who would be on our staff as well. We also have a formage doing our cheese program. So everybody that is associated with Coco Vino are experts in their fields, in their proper fields. We have wine machines, which is a very unique, very unique purpose for our our business. These machines are typically afforded to five-star hotels or cruise ships. But you you would be able to find anywhere within fifteen to twenty miles radius. So it would allow Coco Vino in Glendora to have a very unique purpose to be able to have wine machines, a retail setup, and also an area where people can actually sample wine and taste wine and have wine classes. All of our staff will also be required to be certified to sell alcohol. They would have to be a card-carrying member of tips training, which allows everybody to understand how to identify people who are inebriated when they show up and how to serve wine moving forward after they sit down. So those are the things that, you know, that we've all been through as professionals and we, you know, our staff will also be certified. Curtis, would you like to add to that?
Yes, I mean, I grew up in Walnut. I was born in Pomona, spent my whole life, went to Walnut High School. Most of my parents were coaches and teachers. My dad was at Edgewood. My mom's at West Covina. And it's I know Glendora very well. I have a lot of friends that live here. I'm just excited about opening up an establishment, I think, that embraces Glendora and be very proud to say that, you know, our shop is in Glendora, because I know people in Glendora have a lot of pride for their community. And we definitely want to be part of that community. That's what we look forward to the most.
All right, great. Do you gentlemen have anything else?
No, I think we're good. Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay. Uh, with that said, I will open the public, uh, open to the general public. I invite members of the public to address the commission, announce that the speakers and uh, the speakers are limited three minutes. Um, a public hearing item, on this public hearing item, this is your time to speak uninterrupted, please address your comments to the presiding officer, the public comment is limited to a total of thirty minutes. If you'd like to request to speak, select the raise hand icon on your Zoom before you close the public comment period. We will, you will then be called on to take your turn to speak. Do we have any public comment cards on this?
Chair Kent, we have received no email requests to to provide public testimony and we have received no requests from Zoom participants.
Okay. Um, hearing we have none before I close, public comment to the applicant. Have you read the conditions of approval and are you in agreement with them?
Yes, I have, and yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay, great. Then I will close public comment at this time and uh we'll bring it to the city clerk. Oh wait, I'm sorry, we bypassed, does commissioners have any questions of staff?
Ready to motion?
Or a motion? Questions or motion?
Like, uh, I'd like to make a motion including items one and two uh to approve the project.
I second the motion.
City clerk, do you want to take this role?
So, so there's a motion on the floor to, one, adopt a category exemption pursuant to Government Code one five three zero one of the California Environmental California Act Guidelines and to, two, adopt a Planning Commission resolution entitled A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Glendora, California, approving a conditional use permit and making a finding of public convenience or necessity to allow a wine and beer tasting room on certain property located at one three one North Glendora Avenue, Glendora, California, PLN twenty dash zero zero three.
I I I do have one question. Um, Commissioner Norwood?
Yes, go ahead.
And and this might be more for, uh, regarding the the outdoor seating potentially. Um, even though we don't have the authority to grant them that, because uh, they're not necessarily a restaurant per se, although they would be serving packaged food. Could we add something in there, did the, in the, in the resolution to uh, not to permit it, but the, that, that we would be if they presented something to the city that it wouldn't have to come back to us again?
I see, I see, I'm 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 with Commissioner Norwood there. I I can see this being a hit in Glendora and expansion being absolutely possible. And I'm with, I'm with you, Commissioner. I, anything we can do?
Want them to have to come back and jump through hoops through us. If we can state that we as a group agreed, if they went through the appropriate hoops, whether through the county, the state or city staff or the city manager, that uh, they they can get that approval without coming back to this body.
And I I'm also in agreement with that. I mean, I've, I've, I walk past the site all the time, I see the signs for classes. I think it's gonna be a huge hit in the city and I I agree with Commissioner Norwood, I don't want them to have to, you know, jump through hoops if they want to um, you know, add on that feature, so I I absolutely would agree with that, if we're able to do that.
I want them to jump through the appropriate hoops, just not through our hoop again.
Not, not through, not through unnecessary hoops, let's put it that way.
So I guess the question to the planning director and the city attorney, is there anything we can put in here that says should the code be adopted to allow tasting rooms, outdoor seating? That it triggers it to allow these people, or do they need to come back to us? Or can we give you the authority to at your discretion alone?
I believe that you can give us the, you can give staff the authority. Um, I would ask that it would be, since we have a a a motion and a second, that 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 e- everybody agrees that that would be a quote-unquote friendly amendment to the original motion. Um, we, the staff may have to look into whether uh that outdoor option that you're proposing is something that they can do. But if it is, if what you're authorizing is a staff slash administrative ability to uh undertake that uh action, then I I I see no legal issue with it.
So then I will amend my motion to include that the staff are authorized, given review and um uh, understanding that under a type forty-two license that we are, would, could allow outside uh service for this type of a application or CUP in our city, how's that?
And I will, I will second the amended um motion.
Quick, quick question.
Yeah.
This is, I believe, to the director. Um, Jeff, um, our code does not allow with a forty-two, correct? Or does forty-two now allow it?
I, that'd be a question for ABC. I I, in in the past, I will tell you, and it's been a very long time, in another city I worked for, uh, there was a type, similar type license associated, I think it was a type, similar license with a what was clearly a bar, although they'd served some food too. Um, and they very much wanted to serve outside, the city wanted them to serve outside, but ABC wouldn't let them. Now, this is, you know, sixteen, seventeen years ago, but um, so I don't know what ABC's position on is with respect to a a type forty-two license and serving outside, we'd have to look into that.
Yeah.
That's, that's fair enough, but under these conditions, if if the county or ABC allowed it because of COVID, uh, they they can't, obviously, they're gonna allow outdoor seating before they allow indoor seating. Um, I just wanted to give them that option. They still have to jump through the ABC hoops and whatever city hoops uh, they need to do, but they don't need to come back to this body to get approval for that.
Well, if the purpose of the amendment is for COVID-related purposes, you know.
I would say no, I I wouldn't tie it to COVID.
Yeah, I didn't.
I'm not, I'm not tying it to COVID, no, no, I'm not tying it to COVID, I'm saying that because of COVID, they they might be seeking the ability to outdoors at first, because maybe the county or state allows that or ABC allows that.
Correct.
But if we didn't add, I know, I don't want to tie it to COVID at all, I'm just using these particular times as an example.
Well, I agree, I agree, it should be not necessarily tied to COVID, but even after the COVID restrictions are are lifted.
In conflict with the definition, though, because it, this business will not qualify under the bona fide definition, and bona fide, bona fide is defined by ABC um, and and most, most jurisdictions, um, in terms of the definition of a restaurant.
I don't want, I don't want my amendment to include anything related to COVID, that's not the point of my amendment.
No, I just want them to have the ability to, if they go through the appropriate hoops, through ABC, the city, the county, the state, then they don't need to come back to this board, because we have a friendly amendment in there that we've already discussed it and a, and approved it if they got the appropriate approvals at the various levels.
Agreed.
Yes, and that's, that's, um, I'm I'm good with that.
That was my understanding as well, in terms of the 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 recommendation, that we were not talking about a COVID-related situation.
Right.
Situation as to whether ABC would allow the license to have a sidewalk outside or some sort of outdoor uh beverage consumption. And I I do have to agree with Jeff that in my experience, they generally do not. So, uh, it it it's just, it's a condition of whether they can actually meet the ABC standards.
Right.
Perfect.
And yes.
We're charging our, our staff to uh monitor that appropriately.
Okay, now, okay, I I understand everybody's, and we don't want to tie it to COVID. But for these folks to open their doors during this pandemic, if the only way for them to open their doors is under some sort of COVID umbrella issued by the county, can we allow it to be COVID, to at least get them started? If ABC won't allow it under anything else except COVID, I, how do we amend our thing? How do, how how do we do that then?
Uh, yeah, I I think it's a very safe answer, because first of all, we don't want, we don't want to uh uh, attach this to one where we haven't attached to all. If it is COVID-related, it's basically out of our hands, the state is going to dictate if they can or cannot, and that will go across the board, and so we don't need, we don't need to include that.
Right, that would be the state and or the county, yes.
I I I was just hoping if there was a life preserver to throw out there, if they needed it, we could do so at this point in time.
I think we already threw it to them.
Yeah, I think.
The best, if we, if the commission is, you know, representing the community, is wanting to go a different direction with respect to the current regulations on outdoor service of alcohol. Um, at the time when those provisions were adopted, when we opened up outdoor alcohol consumption, the commission at that time, and I realize it's changed, was concerned of that, and it was always a concern that the kitchen be open to serve food whenever alcohol was served, you know, that it, that it be a restaurant um, if we were gonna allow outdoor dining, it it were, and I I think if the commissions wants to at some point in time consider a change in those regulations, like initiating some sort of amendment to the code, because the code for the village especially is clear that it it should be a restaurant or it has to be a restaurant to serve um on the, and and it does talk about the kitchen being open as part of those regulations and like I said at the time, you know, the, at that period of time, eight, ten years ago, the commission was concerned about um, you know, alcohol, that it be served with a a meal. That was a discussion, is my recollection, so I just want to make that point, so you're aware of that.
So do we not, then we don't as a commission have the ability then to add on that extra amendment to the, to the proposal, is what you're saying?
Well, we we have the ability to add that the, that it doesn't need to come back to us.
Okay.
Standing right, that that, that staff and and administration could make that decision. If they jump through the appropriate hoops and meet the appropriate ordinances and the state and county all agree and ABC agrees, they just don't need to come back to us, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and I, and I understand that, Commissioner Norwood, I I, and I think all we're saying is I I think we're all trying to take it a little step further than that and to make it even easier for them to uh, come to our city and and do what they do, uh, and remove as many restrictions as we possibly can in this meeting.
We can't control all the other bodies that they have to jump the hoops through.
I get that, I get that, I get that.
Or or unless the uh, the the laws that are in regulations issued by ABC require another public hearing to be heard by you.
Right.
Not withstanding.
Right, if outdoor dining, or I'm sorry, outdoor beverage uh matter takes them
out of the class that they're uh applying for into a different class, then they they do need to have another public hearing.
Right, right.
So, Jeff, uh, question to planning director Jeff. You understand the spirit of what we're saying?
I I think so, I think you're, you're saying if it becomes possible from a regulatory perspective to serve alcohol outside with this business, you want to give staff the ability to grant that consent.
Right, with, without having to come before the commission, our commission again.
Yep, all right, so you understand it. Kathleen, let's go ahead and call for, call for the motion.
On an administrative basis, unless there is some other uh, element of law that requires the uh commission to rehear.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's fine, and I'm fine with with, I know, um, they were amending the 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 motion, and I'm fine with seconding that motion with the amendment.
So there is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Matthews, a second by Commissioner Cos. I will conduct a roll call vote, and that will be Commissioner Cos.
Yes.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes, please.
And Chair Kent? Chair Kent?
Uh-oh, is he, is he muted?
I think he's frozen.
Frozen. Uh-oh.
This will be an interesting vote to write out.
Can he type in the chat box?
Send it to everybody, yes. I'll take that.
His pimple is dark, too.
I'm disappointed we got away from a bag of Cheetos and a good Cabernet.
Yeah, and he's off now.
He's off. Um, let's go ahead and just give him a minute to get back on. And if not, we'll turn it over to the vice chair to conduct the rest of the meeting.
All right. All right, um, well, I will presume and talk slowly so that, so that uh commissioner can can reappear. If not, then.
Do you wanna actually, do you want to take a five-minute recess and just see if he shows back up, or do you want to continue?
I'll make a motion to take a five minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Perfect.
I would agree with that, thank you. Okay, let's do that.
I don't know if it's appropriate or not during recess, but Juanito looks an awful lot like Johnny Mathis. At least on camera here. I was tempted to ask him to sing the Twelfth of Never or something. You get that much, Juanito? You're muted. There you go.
I said that's a first, however, it is a compliment, because I love, my mom actually loves Johnny Mathis.
Uh, he's great, love him, absolutely love him.
But I I I will definitely let her know I received that compliment after I get off of this call.
On on my picture that I'm looking at right now, you're a forty-year-old Johnny Mathis.
Well, I just got a text from uh Mr. Ken, his uh internet has crashed. I think he's out for the rest of the meeting, if you want to resume.
Okay.
Uh, we've lost, uh, I don't think we need, okay, all right, so I'll I'll assume the gavel here.
Actually, let's give it a second, because we need our attorney present to start the meeting again.
I was just gonna say, we're missing, we're missing staff and our attorney.
And I I was gonna say, can he even text his vote?
Uh, he just, uh, just, uh, uh, do, do you want him to text a vote for item one? Is that it?
For the, the public hearing item.
Okay.
And then, uh, Kathleen, if you can read that into the record as a roll call vote.
Okay.
If that's possible.
I could read it into the record, I just, without him confirming his vote.
Let me see, he says he's responding, it looks like.
Okay.
Okay, we do not have to have members of staff present to confirm a vote, do we?
Everybody, uh, no, but uh, the director's back, and I think we're good.
So.
Okay, all right.
No, but there is, but there is a requirement that a roll call vote is taken, so if he can text you and say I'll vote this, a yea or nay.
So, um, he he has texted to me, I vote yes and approve.
Perfect. So the roll call passes five zero with Chair Kent uh, voting yes via text message.
Weird times, guys.
It is weird.
Oh, wait, Chair, uh, Chair is coming back.
Okay.
Lost, lost in the cloud, I guess, huh?
Welcome back.
I'm back, if you need me.
Yay.
Where are we at? Where are we at? Do you still need me?
So we just confirmed that the, um, motion on the ta, on the floor passed five zero with you responding via, yes, via text message.
That's correct. I voted yes.
So we're ready to move on to consent calendar.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Um, is anyone, we have one item on here. We're in a meeting. Does anyone have any comments on consent calendar? Consent item number two. And commissioners?
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, Kent.
And that was Davis. So I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Matthews, uh, second by Vice Chair Davis. I'll conduct a roll call vote. Commissioner Cos.
Yes.
Commissioner Matthews.
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis.
Yes.
And Chair Kent.
Uh, I abstain. I was not there. Correct? Yes.
So the motion carries four zero with the Chair Kent abstaining from that vote.
Okay, thank you. Move on to unfinished business. Um, I see none. Uh, new business, there is none. Uh, we'll move down to commission staff. I have staff. Do we have any items you'd like to announce or?
Uh, no, nothing to announce.
Okay, I'll bring it to anybody else in staff? No. All right, I'll bring it to commissioners. Um, Commissioner Cos, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Norwood?
No, thank you.
Vice Chair Davis? No, just a nice touch Juanito being at the, uh, at the site. All right, and then Commissioner Matthews.
You know what? I'll defer to you first and then I'll follow you.
Okay, um, when we do it during this meeting, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Michael Garvey. Not only is my uncle, but he was a avid supporter of the Glendora Library and other organizations in town. Unfortunately, we lost him here right before Christmas. So when we do come to adjournment, I will adjourn in honor of Michael Garvey.
And unfortunately, we have two more names that are, uh, important people in this town. Uh, Hal Reynolds, who, uh, owned Action Stamping, passed away this last month. And Paul Hatch, who was an important fixture in our local real estate and in the Mormon community. So if we could, uh, also honor those individuals.
Okay, great. Um, we will adjourn in honor of those folks. Everybody, please stay safe and let's get through this. Uh, that is an adjournment. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Good evening. Stay safe, everyone.
We're adjourning at seven fifty-four.